No?
So how many do we have? Congratulations.
Uh, just two.
One, two, three. Test, test. So Geary and Boston Ellis. That should be fine, right? If they go there and there.
I'm not sure what this is doing.
Oh, I can't, yeah. It doesn't look like they can hear you, uh, YouTube.
I'll call the roll. Jason Geary?
Here.
Ryan Ross?
Here.
O'Neal? Susan Stewart?
Here.
Michelle Boston Ellis?
Here.
Bob Anderson?
Here.
Andrew Gleiser?
Here.
It is now 4:00 PM and time to begin the regular meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Jason Geary, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The members of the Commission are as follows: Ryan Ross, Vice Chair; Michelle Boston Ellis; Susan Stewart; Cindy O'Neal; Robert Anderson; Andrew Gleiser; and from the city staff: Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager; Brent Nelson, Senior Planner; Chris Mattson, Senior Planner; Ron Cuny, Zoning Enforcement Officer; Stephen Pastoka, City Attorney; and Larissa Carroll, Administrative Secretary. Until further notice, no in-person public attendance will be permitted at Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. However, we have a telephone number available if you wish to call and provide a comment on any agenda item. That phone number is 712-224-4996. We thank you for listening to this meeting in order to give your ideas and added information, which will help us in formulating our recommendations. The items will go to City Council for Action on June 1, 2020 at 4:00 PM. Our procedure is such that I will introduce an item, then the staff report; the petitioner or his agent will make a presentation; then all those in favor of the petition, followed by all those opposed to the petition; and finally, a rebuttal by the petitioner. After the public hearing on an item, we will then go into executive session, at which time, we will formulate our recommendation. At that time, no further public input is allowed, but you're invited to remain listening if you so desire. When you wish to speak, please call 712-224-4996. All callers shall state their name and address for the record, and then provide their comment. All calls will be limited to three minutes, so that everybody may have a chance to speak. Before we begin any portion of the meeting, will any of the Commissioners be abstaining on any item on tonight's agenda? Seeing none at this point in time, we will begin the meeting. The first item on the agenda is Agenda Item 2020-0029: Requested rezoning of land located in the 4,000 block of West 30th Street South of said street from SR to AG. Staff report?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. The petitioner, Ellen Fagan, representing the property owner, Bradley Wilson, has requested the rezoning of Lot 2 of Dogwood Edition. If you recall, back in February and March of this year, the property owner had submitted a five-lot subdivision at this property. It went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, received approval, along with a rezoning to suburban residential. Following the Commission's recommendation, the item was forwarded to the City Council. At its March 9, 2020 meeting, the City Council approved the rezoning ordinance, rezoning the entire property from AG to SR Suburban Residential. At that time, the five-lot subdivision was still going through the process for approval. We ran into some concerns with that final plat with some stormwater drainage and access off of West 30th Street to the north of the subject property. As a result of those concerns, we've continued to work with the surveyor and the property owner, and he has came back and reduced that plat to a two-lot subdivision. And so, on the screen in front of you, the area in white on that aerial is the new Lot 2 of Dogwood Edition. It contains approximately... 27.25 acres. It was included in the original rezoning when this was plotted to be a five-lot subdivision. We have gone back to just a two-lot subdivision with the first lot on the south, which contains the existing residence, so we're going to continue to leave this a two-lot subdivision. Therefore, the property owner has requested we rezone this property back to AG. So therefore, it does meet the minimum requirement of 20 acres for the zoning district of AG. This next slide shows the plat that was recently approved by the City Council and also recorded over at the courthouse. And so, now, we have an official Lot 2 of Dogwood Edition. So with that, staff would recommend approval of the rezoning.
Any questions for city staff from the Commission? Seeing no questions from the Commission, we will now see if there's any public comments that want to... anybody from the public that wants to weigh in on this particular item. Obviously, please call 712-224-4996, and we will go ahead and pause and wait to see if anybody wants to make any comments on this item. Okay, it does not appear that anybody's called in to express any opinions on this item, so we will now go into executive session. Does any of the Commission members have either discussion or motion on this item?
This is Ryan. I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Ross?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gleiser?
Yes.
O'Neal is not here. Stewart?
Yes.
Boston Ellis?
Yes.
Geary?
Yes. That item passes on a 6-0 vote, and will go to City Council for their determination on June 1 at 4:00 PM. Next item on the agenda is Agenda Item 2020-0032: Requested rezoning of a property located at 1214 Fourth Street from Zone Classification BP to Zone Classification GC. Staff report?
Thank you. Well, I should present the next two items together, both the rezoning and the requested site plan. As stated, requested rezoning, the property located at 1214 Fourth Street, and also requested site plan approval for the property located at the same. The petitioner is proposing a mixed-use, commercial and residential building on the site. That would be a five-story building that would include 6,600 square feet of commercial retail or restaurants on the main floor and 56 apartments on the upper four stories. So this is the property here in green with the site plan overlaid on the aerial. Proposed building would be here in white, some parking here in the south portion of that. Fourth Street would be on the north side of the property, and Floyd Boulevard would be here on the east side. So as stated, requested rezoning from Business Park BP to General Commercial GC. The Business Park Zone does prohibit mixed use as a use within that zoning district. The General Commercial Zone does allow it as a limited use. There are no particular standards for mixed use within the zoning code, so just the general limited standards that would apply to all... limited uses within that zoning district or within any zoning district would apply. And those two are that the proposed limited use in its proposed location will not conflict with any implementation... or the implementation of current adopted plans, and that the limited use is compatible with the surrounding land uses and natural environment. And just to point that one out, the Future Land Use map does show this area as urban residential, somewhat surprisingly, when I looked this one up, other than commercial or industrial that we somewhat figured would be in this area. But that's defined as older areas of higher density, where infill redevelopment or in forms of density similar to what's existing in the area. And this category may include a mixture of housing types, including apartments. So just to look at what the zoning is in the surrounding area, so again, the property here in the middle in green with, again, Floyd... or Fourth Street to the north, Floyd to the east, somewhat of a large collection of zones in this particular area. So again, the property is Zone BP, property immediately to the south, also Zone BP. That's essentially a warehouse currently. Properties to the north and west are Zone General Commercial. Mixed tenant spaces to the north, there's a parking lot located immediately to the west, and then the general industrial on the east side of Floyd. When we first reviewed this, we did look at the possibility of rezoning to a couple of different zones. One was the downtown zone. Essentially, that would remove all of the site plan issues that we're going to be reviewing also. However, we're not in the future land use designation for downtown. We're not contiguous with the downtown zoning districts. You can see the nearest are over here on the west, which would be the Promenade and the new hotel that's being built on the... You can see the nearest are over here on the west, which would be the promenade and the new hotel that's being built on the, to the north of that. We felt like that would be a spot zone if we were to go downtown commercial. We did look at the historic Fourth Street Zone. You can see that on pink here on the map. However, this area is not part of the historic Fourth Street designation. We didn't feel like that was appropriate. It's also not contiguous because of the parking lot in between. So staff felt like the best zoning district to rezone to would be General Commercial since that is in the area, would be contiguous to this particular property. And then looking at the future land use map, again, talking about the downtown zoning. This area is not in the downtown designation for future land use. It is in that urban residential, which does come down a couple of blocks here in this kind of orange, brownish color. So staff does feel this particular rezoning, the proposed use, does meet the future land use designation of the comprehensive plan. So then moving over to the site plan, this is the site plan that was proposed. City staff did review this at the Development Review Committee in March 26. There were a number of issues that came up at that meeting. A lot of them, we knew were going to be coming up and that Planning and Zoning Commission review was going to have to happen. So we'll go through those individually. But again, to reiterate, the building would be what is white here with parking to the south. They are proposing ground floor parking in this area. Essentially, the east half of the building on the ground floor is going to be parking. And then the remainder would be the commercial space. They're showing landscaping along the Fourth Street frontage, as well as some landscaping in the parking lot to the south. And the dumpster enclosure would be in the southeast corner here of the lot as proposed. The alleys would remain open, which still remain public right-of-way as part of this request. So again, staff did review this item at the Development Review Committee meeting, noting a couple of issues that we'll go through individually that are being requested waivers from, what the municipal code would state. The first is the setbacks. So the General Commercial Zone, just going through the setbacks that were not met. On this one, front yard setback required at 25 feet. They are proposing a six-foot setback. Streetside, this would be along Floyd Boulevard to the east, does require a 20-foot setback. They're proposing a 2.3-foot setback. And the interior side, this would be from the alley on the west, requires a 15-foot setback. And they're proposing a 14.5-foot setback. And the rear yard would be to the south that is being met on this particular site plan. Density requirement for an apartment use, and this doesn't matter what zone you're in, it's for the use itself. Requires 2,400 square feet per apartment unit. The site is approximately 24, a little over 24,000 square feet. That would allow 10 apartment units on the site. And again, they are proposing 56 apartment units. So they do exceed the density requirement from the zoning or from the apartment use. Parking, the 6,600 square feet of commercial space, code would require one space per 200 square feet. So that would require 33 parking stalls for the commercial portion of the site. Then the 56 apartment units, we would break that out by the number of bedrooms. So the 48 one-bedroom are studio units, 1.5 stalls per each of those units would be required. And then the eight two-plus bedroom units, 2.5 stalls would be required for each of those. That would bring it up to 92 parking stalls. So for total requirement of 125 stalls would be required by code. And they are showing a total with the exterior and the main level interior parking of 37. We have received a letter from a nearby property owner to the northwest. It said they would be willing to lease 45 to 50 parking stalls to the developer for their tenants to be able to park on. So that would still leave them short parking, but it would get them closer to that total number. Building coverage ratio for a five-story building in the General Commercial Zone, you are limited to 8% of the total lot to be covered by the building itself. Their proposal would put them at a 12% building coverage ratio. Impervious surface ratio, General Commercial does require 12% of the lot to be pervious. So that can be essentially non-surface, non-hard-surfaced area, landscaping, grass, rock area. They're showing a total of 9% of that on the site. Design standards, both the Business Park and General Commercial Zones do require conformity with the design standards. So that doesn't change with this zoning. The building does meet it. We haven't seen the dumpster enclosure would still have to meet that. We can, city staff can review that prior to the building permit being issued. But the building does appear to meet the design standard requirements. Signage, typically on a site plan, we always ask for any freestanding signage to be shown. I don't believe that was their intent to have a freestanding sign on the site. But if one is shown, a five-foot setback from any property line is required. And given that the building essentially is being built to the property line, that could be problematic on the site to meet that setback. But my understanding is at this point, they don't intend to have freestanding only building or wall signage. And that would be allowed and would be permitted separately by city staff. And then stormwater detention is the last issue that came up from our engineering department. Stormwater is shown as underground under the parking lot on the site, which would be allowed. However, we have not received the calculations as to the sizing of that underground storage yet. So we wouldn't ask for one condition of approval that those calculations would be provided to engineering for review and approval. It doesn't appear like that would impact the site plan at all since that's all being stored underground. Just before any building permit was issued, we want to verify that that has been met. Just a view of the site, looking to the south, this is from Fourth Street. Again, Floyd Boulevard would be here on the left. My understanding is the billboard would be removed and relocated, but this would be the site in question. The north-south alley, again, with the access to the parking would be from the alley. And then the rendering provided by the petitioner of what the building essentially would look like. Again, Fourth Street here on the lower portion of the image, Floyd Boulevard then would be behind this image. So that, city staff do recommend approval of the rezoning. Typically, we don't make recommendations on the site plan, but we would open up any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Chris, this is Ryan. Can you give me a reminder as to how parking was handled at the Table 32 site for Ho-Chunk? I recall that there was less, significantly less parking than maybe what the code required.
Yep, and they did provide a parking study that did show, the code allows you to provide a parking study where there's circumstances where there's a belief that the code requires too many stalls. They can show us essentially five other locations that are similar in design or nature or use. That essentially they don't need the amount of parking that the code would require. So that's what Table 32 and actually the entirety of that development, Virginia Square, did. I think in all three of those buildings, we did receive parking studies for each of those. We did receive a parking study for this development as well, that's part of your packet. That did show a couple of the other developments that the petitioners or the development team has done across the state. That showed that their parking generally is close to what they are providing on the site.
On-site or with the lease?
I believe with the lease.
Okay.
So, Chris, with the parking, I know you can't calculate on-street parking with your parking calculations. But is parking available on the street there?
Parking is available on the street along Fourth and to the west, which is Iowa.
I don't know that it's at, I don't know if there's parking on the right side of that intersection.
Is it metered parking there?
It would be Iowa Street.
I don't know if it's metered. I mean, our building is right down the way and there's, yeah. I think it's though it's on the north portion is where I see cars parked, not the southern portion. But there's big empty lots there now, so.
In addition to the on-street parking, the lots behind the buildings on Historic Fourth Street, directly to the west of this site, west of Iowa, south of Fourth. We do have agreements with those property owners that allow for public parking in those two lots. There is an agreement for parking and so that's open for public, for public purposes. And then also, as shown in Chris's report, we have several parking, municipal parking garages, approximately three to three and a half blocks away from the subject property.
Okay, so which one was the one, which on this map, which one was the one where they said they were going to lease space?
Be at the Malloy Electric site to the northwest.
Oh, so that's like basically two blocks away? Because they control that already?
And I have an agreement on that site. We have a letter which was included in the packet that the property owner would be open and agreeable to leasing stalls either directly to the developer or to directly to the tenants, as is done in downtown.
Because they have some sort of ownership interest in the land today. I mean, when I looked through the packet, Malloy Electric had an ownership issue in this, in this site, right?
Malloy Electric has ownership in their site at the corner that we've, that we've shown.
They don't have a ownership here on this corner?
In the subject development site?
Yeah. I thought there was a letter I read that said that they were looking to develop this as part of a.
No, they're willing to lease it to the developer or and/or the individual tenants, similar to what occurs downtown where employees and tenants rent spaces from private property owners. The Malloy Electric building is currently vacant.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I misread that then. I thought Malloy had interest in both. Okay. Sorry.
And the municipal parking structures, we have one immediately north of the new hotel, which is the parking deck. And then as you recall, there's additional two municipal parking ramps to the west of the convention center.
What about the parking lot that's directly to the east? Is that under separate ownership?
That's under ownership of the building to the south, which is an office supply.
Yeah.
And we have made contact with that property owner, both city staff and the developer. There's no agreement at this time to use it, but there may be an opportunity later on to do some shared parking there. So it could be like a daytime parking for the business, a nighttime parking for the residents. So that is an option, but it's not in, under any type of agreement at this.
Okay. Other questions from the commission?
How are we, this is Ryan. How do we handle parking for the Commerce Center and on the Warrior Hotel? Are we, and I realize that's a different zoning district, but can you give me an idea of the park, the parking that was required with respect to those sites? And is what the petitioner is proposing consistent with how those developments were undertaken?
Yeah, both of those sites are in the downtown commercial zoning district where parking is not required. So we didn't even review it for that.
So they, they didn't have to provide any parking on their own? They were totally exempted from that because of the zoning district? And basically, people were just to park along the streets where they felt they could?
Yeah, Warrior is providing some on-street or off-street parking to the north of their building, but code did not require them to do that. If you're downtown commercial zoning district, you don't have to provide any stalls.
Ryan, this is Jason. I feel like that's kind of a double-edged sword because in this case, this, these people do have to provide some sort of parking justification. But the flip side is is they don't have to do the design standards like downtown does, even though they're, in my opinion, they're right on the verge of being in downtown.
Downtown would have a different set of design standards than what is here. They both have design standards, just downtown would be a lot stricter.
One of the questions I had was what would the, if they were in the downtown district, what would the design, how would the design standards affect them aside from parking? You know, the building itself, how would the building have to look?
I recall off the top of my head, I believe it's almost 100% decorative.
Okay.
That would be required, not the 60% that GC would be required to have.
And is it going to be 60% decorative on all sides or is it just on part?
I believe it's primarily on the frontage that faces street. But in this case, since there's the parking lot behind it, I would have to research that a little bit more because I know it's primarily the street frontage that faces the main street that has to be.
Which would be Fourth.
Fourth, and they have Floyd on the east.
Yeah.
So just looking at it, I would think it'd almost be all four facades, like it would be today under GC, just a higher standard.
Other questions from the commission?
Chris, can you just, can you walk us, I'm going through the, the various exemptions that are being requested, setbacks, density, stormwater. And to me, the big issue, I think it's probably for most people, is the parking. Do you, do you see any of the other requested exemptions as being problematic from a city staff perspective?
I don't, given the development trend in the area is essentially 100% lot coverage. Just looking at the map, you can see most of the structures nearby were pretty much a block away from the downtown area, historic zoning. But what in the future land use map identifies as downtown. I don't see this as really being out of character for the neighborhood.
The only, the only difference.
My final question is, does the staff have an opinion on the parking and whether or not they would be flexible in deviating from the required parking allotment?
Yeah, I think on this site and a lot of the other sites we've reviewed, that staff have been flexible on reducing the required number of parking stalls. This one is a little bit more of a request than what we've seen in the past. But I think as we move forward and they look for additional parking agreements, the one that was included in the packet, they said they were willing. And then maybe some other of the nearby property owners that, getting closer to that number, I think would help staff in our review and comfort with the site.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ryan, this is.
Chris, this is Susan Stewart. They, you know, if you go to downtown Des Moines, it's kind of littered with buildings that look just like this one. How do they deal with parking down there? Is there something different in their zoning code than ours? And is there, you know, has it worked down there that you're aware of? And also in, whether in this zone or any other zone, has this kind of a parking situation ever been dealt with by P&amp;Z?
I don't know the Des Moines zoning code or the zoning area very well. I do know, I'm sure they've got the similar situations where you're a block or a couple of blocks away from what is considered downtown. I'm sure Des Moines is very similar to us where downtown parking is not required. I do know in some parts of downtown that have seen, of downtown Des Moines that have seen development recently, they have been going in and actually building parking garages or parking lots that the city has went in to repurpose to accommodate some of that development that they're seeing. But I believe Des Moines sees a, very similar to the same issues that we'd be reviewing tonight.
Hey, Ryan, this is Jeff Hanson. I would just go back to your question in regards to the parking and concur with Chris's statement that this is a little unique situation with the location of this property being on the fringe of Historic Fourth and downtown. Again, as Susan mentioned, you know, we haven't seen a request quite like this for the reduction in parking. But again, we're not in a suburban area like we've recently approved north of Lowe's down in Sunnybrook where we have ample amount of real estate involved in those projects. You know, as an example, that was 214, 214 apartment units. And they were able to provide ample parking clearly because it's a much larger site, it's a suburban site. You know, we're considering this to be a downtown project, although it's not in the downtown zoning district. But it clearly is an urban infill development site.
Okay.
Other comments or comments or questions from the commission?
I have a question just regarding the sidewalk. Is there a sidewalk on that lot right now and does it need improvements? And then also, just because it is on the kind of the, the fringe of the downtown area, what are the rules? Or maybe have they proposed anything regards to streetscaping, like benches or lighting or whatnot on the front? And how does that work?
They are showing sidewalk in the north. You can see the gray shaded area here is the sidewalk that I just proposed. We may have to have the petitioner answer their intent if they're going to completely remove and place new sidewalk in. They're showing a large amount of landscaping on this north facade and can be seen a little bit in the rendering here as well. But they are intending to improve it. I'm not 100% sure if they're intending to completely remove and replace. That would be a question for the petitioner. And I'm not seeing on the site plan labeled if there's any benches or pedestrian amenities being added there as well. So that'd be another question that we would have to ask if that is something that is intended to be added.
Other questions or comments from the commission? So I'm going to, probably last comment, I'm going to chime in. If you want to pull up that site map, my only concern really is not so much that they shift some of their parking off-site, which I get. My, my, my concern is is that they're going to shift parking off-site to where the, the people who actually live there are not going to walk from Malloy Electric around. people who actually live there are not going to walk from Malloy Electric around, around the horn to come to this. What they're going to do is probably go over into the site adjacent or into the site right behind the Hydman Law Firm, which does have probably, I mean, I might work right down there, I'd say that that is probably maybe 60%, you know, open throughout the day and especially even at night. And so my only concern is not that, that we reduce, I'm okay with reducing the parking, but I think that a more honest assessment would that be is, is that we need to look at more adjacent sites to have lease agreements with rather than Malloy Electric, which is going to be really a pretty inconvenient walk when you get into the wintertime in Sioux City. And I, I think it's just, I think people will end up parking on sites more immediately close to that and they'll pick up, they'll pick up sites closer. And I would rather we just have an honest lease with those sites because there probably is a smattering of different spots they could be at. So, and then the other thing is, is that with the COVID-19, you think about more, you know, lockdown, more people are probably staying in their apartments, working rather than leaving during the day like they used to. And so now, you know, you really honestly do need parking spaces. So, any other questions? Otherwise, we'll go to comments. Okay, no more comments from the commission. So now we'll open the phones and if anybody wants to share their thoughts on this item, whether for or against or to ask questions, feel free to call 712-224-4996.
And Jason, I do have the petitioner and their team available here on, on the phone as well. And they've been listening to the presentation, so I will turn it over to Rose. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Would you like to provide any additional statements or make any additional presentation regarding the project?
Sure, I'll make a few brief comments if I can.
Sure.
So for the record, this is Rose Schroeder. I'm with Bolton and Mink. Our address of record is 309 East Biscuit Street, Suite 202 in Des Moines, Iowa, 50309. So on behalf of the project team, I would like to thank the commission for their time today. Mr. Mattson did a very good job overviewing the project as a whole and laying it out. So I wanted to provide just a couple clarifications to some of the questions that, that I did hear. And if I missed something, let me know. I, I would certainly understand that there are a number of site plan related matters that you are considering tonight. And I, I would just like to point out this, this is, I think Jeff mentioned it earlier, a little bit interesting site. It's kind of on the fringe of downtown and certainly not correctly in the downtown zoning district, part of the reason why we're here. At the same time, the people for land use kind of calls for this urban residential infill development in the downtown. So I, I think it's kind of an interesting project. The other thing that I would just point out, and it's been stated here already by, by staff and by others, is that there's not really a separate set of considered regulations or requirements for mixed use within the code. So it, it sort of looks at the commercial piece and the residential piece, you know, sort of separately and then, and then tries to make sense of both of those pieces put together, which, which does sometimes do strange things, certainly to things like parking and peak and off-peak parking. A couple of the clarifications I would just make to some of the questions. Mr. Mattson is correct, there is no detached signage anticipated with this project location. It would be all either wall signs, window signs, or, or blade or projecting signs. And we would anticipate to comply with, with those regulations at the time permitting. The other two pieces for consideration at permitting, which we also intend to comply with, dumpster materials, of course, will be included in that permit package and, and will comply. And also the stormwater calculations. Those are sort of being refined as the full plan set is, is refined as we work through the design process. So of course, we'll be happy to provide those for review and comment to the appropriate city department at that time. What else? Oh, one of the other questions was about some of the sort of sidewalk and street scaping elements on, on that north side. And, and our project does anticipate replacing that sidewalk and doing some street scaping elements adjacent to the building on that north side. So I guess those, those were the clarifications at least that I heard. I, I would just reiterate that we feel like this project overall is consistent sort of in density and, and overall sort of project to some of the similar, more recent projects that are in the downtown and South Fourth Street. Certainly understand, you know, that, that this doesn't perfectly fit the mold of some certain code requirements and, and we appreciate that, that you have to take those considerations in, into impact. The last clarification I would make, there was a question about some of the parking ratios that the project team provided as examples of other similar projects that this developer has done. And those ratios that were listed sort of in that table did not include off-street parking numbers. So those ratios were related strictly to the on-street parking, or excuse me, the onsite parking provided. Now, it did also indicate proximity to other off-site parking, but the numbers themselves reflected only the self-contained onsite parking.
Okay, any, any, anything else? Can she hear me? Ma'am, was there anything else you had?
No, I'm sorry, thank you. That is all.
Okay, well, stay, stay on there for a second. Do we have any, do, do any of the commission members have any question for the petitioner's I only have one question. This is Jason Gary. Had, did, in your due diligence process, had you approached the property owners to the, immediately to the east and to the northeast about leasing parking rather than only just Malloy, who's about two blocks away for, for additional off-site for your residential piece?
I've also got another representative of the developer on the line. I, I would request that she speak to that. I wasn't directly involved.
Okay.
Joy, would you mind introducing yourself and providing any comments, please?
Absolutely. This is Joy Honeman. I'm here representing Merge. My business partner, Brent Dahlstrom, is actually at another city meeting today, so I'm filling in for him. He definitely made contact with several of the business owners and property owners in the area. And getting through this process so that we can actually define how many, how many parking stalls we're looking for is a key determinant to actually having meaningful conversations and signing leases with those folks. So while there was generally interest in willing this to work with us, I can't report any specifics.
Any other questions for, for the petitioner at all? Okay. Okay, thank you guys for your participation. So sorry for getting a little bit ahead of myself. Now that we've heard from the petitioner, now we will go to the public comment portion. Again, if you want to call in, ask questions or speak in favor and opposition, now's the time to call, 712-224-4996. You guys had perfect timing. So we haven't received any calls either for questions or concerns or in favor or in opposition. So we will next go to executive session in which the, we'll, for the commission, do we have a discussion or a motion? I know one of the things that you guys want is the engineering we want. If we're willing to pass this, we do want stormwater as a condition.
On the site plan, correct.
On the site plan. I, I'm going to make an additional proposal. Of course, the, it's up to the commission as to whether, I think demonstrating a parking lease or at least a letter of intent beyond just the Malloy site, I think is, I, I think is important, or at least showing some, some clear written due diligence on, on shopping, some of the parking that's much closer because I think it's just, it's just much more likely to get used by the tenants who end up living there rather than going all the way to, to Malloy. Maybe you guys have different feelings about that, but I'd, I'd like to see a little bit more effort because that's the one clear, or that's the one concern I have about the site, mixed use, commercial, none of those other things concern me. So, your guys' thoughts?
Jason, this is Ryan. I have no problem with you making that amendment. I, I'm not, I, I don't think that's required, but I have no problem with you.
Yeah.
Making that amendment. And I just asked that you help us with how we would vote on that. So I would expect that you maybe would want to have your proposal with your amendment voted on first, and then if that doesn't pass, we would go back to voting on the approval without your amendment.
Yeah, no, I was thinking that, but if, I mean, if it's going to get voted down, it's not that big of a deal, I would just wouldn't add it. But if there's some interest in having, having a little bit more due diligence on that, I think it would be a reasonable request of the petitioner before we move, as we move to the next stages of this. Other, besides that, are there other thoughts or, or conversation on this item?
Jason, this is Andrew. I agree 100% with you. Parking's, parking's tough down there the way it is already.
This is Susan Stewart. Either, is there, I see it's three, it says it's three blocks from the parking garages. There are plenty, plenty of space in those parking garages for like permanent rent? Or would there be any kind of issues with those parking garages having enough space at all times?
Hey, Susan, this is Jeff Hanson. I would state that there's ample amount of parking in those parking ramps that we mentioned within the three, three and a half blocks. I would suggest if you're looking at, if there's some discussion about adding a motion, you could add a motion to the approval of the site plan that city staff can continue to work with the developer. As we have in the past, we've provided them the property ownership contacts, phone numbers. We've even offered to facilitate those meetings with them to provide them some parking options in the general vicinity. Obviously, that parking lot to the west, under the ownership of the office supply place to the south is another opportunity. And so I think if you wanted to add a motion that we continue to reach out to those property owners and look for opportunities, we can definitely do that.
My, my only thought, the way I was going to word it was that you guys get some sort of written response, not just a verbal response, but a written response from the owners, either we're interested, we're not interested, so that we know where the ball really lies, rather than just verbal back and forth. So that, that would be my, my preference anyways.
We can do that.
Jason, I think that, I don't have a problem with the due diligence portion of it as long as we're not making this a requirement that we actually have a signed lease with property that's closer to the site. I agree with you, the, the showing of due diligence, I think, would be important.
And I was going to agree with Ryan too, that we're not going to be, end up having, we're not going to be able to get anyone to enter into a lease. We never have required that. We've had parking issues before.
No, no, yeah, I, I agree. I wasn't going to, yeah, I wasn't thinking along the lines of asking them to show a lease. So just to.
It's more like talking to the marquee and talking to whoever else might have a lot is, and figuring that out is what you're thinking of, Jason. Is that correct?
Yeah, essentially, if, if the property owners adjacent could just say, hey, we're open to it, we're not open to it, and just so the cards are on the table, then, then they can really sort out what the, what the parking will really look like. And make it more enforceable and make it more clear when you do have residents living there that, hey, these, this parking lot's really not available to you and stuff like that. So other, other thoughts or, or a motion? I will go ahead and move, let's see, I will go ahead and, well, we'll go, actually, we need to vote on the rezoning before we're going to go to the site plan. So let's start with that. Does anybody have a motion on rezoning the property from, from BP to GC?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that. This is Susan Stewart.
Anderson?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Boston Ellis?
Yes.
Yuri?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Okay, the rezoning, the, the recommendation the city council passes on a six-zero vote to recommend rezoning. Next is the item, agenda item 2020-0033, the site plan on that property labeled 1214 Fourth Street. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the site plan with the following two conditions. Number one, that the petitioner provide a stormwater retention plan that meets the city's code and criteria. And number two is that the petitioner demonstrates in writing due diligence to identify parking sites adjacent to the property.
I'll second. This is Ryan.
Glazer?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Boston Ellis?
Yes.
Yuri?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And that recommendation passes on a six-zero vote. Next item on the agenda is agenda item 2020-0036, requested vacation of Hills Avenue adjacent to 3636 and 3738 Stone Park Boulevard and 3637 and 3701 Rebecca Street. Staff report.
Thank you. A stated requested vacation of a portion of Hills Avenue located essentially between Rebecca Street, located on the east here on the map, and Stone Park Boulevard located to the west. The petitioner, Scott Luer, probably pronounced that wrong, has the property located here at 3637 Rebecca Street. He is looking to reconstruct a garage that I believe has been partially demolished. I believe some of the walls are still there. However, during the reconstruction, he's not going to be able to meet setbacks, so he's requesting that this portion of Hills Avenue to be vacated. So essentially showing where the garage is, this is the existing, or where the existing garage was, I believe two of these wall, or, yeah, where the garage was, I believe two of these walls are still here. So he is actually currently reconstructing in that location and expanding the garage from its original footprint, which would be four feet closer to the existing property line. Because the garage is facing towards the street, the code would require a 20-foot setback. So because the garage has been completely removed and is being expanded, by code, it would be required to meet the setback requirements at that time. I believe that the garage is actually, was, started to be rebuilt in the configuration that you see on the map here, that was stopped by our inspectors. So this would be the first step to allow the garage in this location, be the vacation and purchase of the right-of-way. Because of the size of the garage, I believe the proposal is 1,200 square feet, a minor modification would have to be reviewed and approved after that. That is also a public hearing process, but that's administered by city staff. So with the vacation, if that's approved, then a minor modification, a new notice would be sent to the property owners surrounding and go through that process for approval. So essentially, this would be the first step for the garage in its current configuration here to be approved. Couple of pictures, this would be looking towards the west from Rebecca Street, so this would essentially be where Hills Avenue would be located. And again, this is approximately the location. And again, this is approximately the location of where that garage would be. You see some of the framing that was begun on that. Looking east, essentially from where that garage is located, the pavement that's in front of that, so this would be Rebecca Street. Looking in front, to the west from the proposed garage, there is somewhat of a creek that runs through here. And also, you can see a little bit in this photo, there is a house, the house at 3636 Stone Park Boulevard. Does appear to have actually been built in the right-of-way. Kinda hard to see in this aerial since it's zoomed out a little bit too far, but the house essentially is located in this general area. That property owner has called city staff and said they were in favor of the request. I don't know if they're aware that their house is essentially located in city right-of-way, but they would be able to purchase that property then and bring their property into conformance. And just a note, since we're on that topic, the city, or the petitioner essentially is only requesting the portion here in front of his garage, so that he would be able to meet setback requirements for that. City staff did extend the vacation all the way to Stone Park Boulevard. Typically, we don't want to create a dead end if we were to create, or to vacate only in front of the petitioner's garage. Essentially, we'd be creating a dead end from two directions. The right-of-way, in staff's review, is not usable, especially with this person's house being located in it. City staff felt that increasing it all the way over to Stone Park Boulevard right-of-way would actually better multiple properties in this case, since they would have the ability to purchase where their home is, but then also meet the petitioner's request. Then the last photo, essentially is looking from Stone Park Boulevard to the east, and again, essentially where that right-of-way would be located, the house would be located within that. So, with that, city staff would recommend approval. Open up any questions?
Any questions, any questions for staff? Seeing none, is the petitioner calling, did they want to speak to this, or are we? Okay. Seeing, then we'll go to the public comments. So, if you have questions or comments on the agenda item, feel free to call 712-224-4996. We'll pause here for a moment to see if anybody wants to call in and share their thoughts Okay, it appears as though we have waited long enough and no one has spoken on this item, or called in to speak on this item. So, we're gonna move to the executive session. Does any of the commission members either have discussion or a motion on this item?
This is Ryan. I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Boston Ellis?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gleiser?
Yes.
That passes on a six-zero vote, the requested, the request of AK. Next agenda item is agenda item 2020-0037, requested vacation of a portion of South Rosella Street abutting 2903 Dodge Avenue. Staff report.
Good afternoon. Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. As stated, the petitioner, Ronald Bridget, is requesting the subject vacation adjacent to 2903 Dodge Avenue. The subject vacation is a six-foot by 132-foot strip of South Rosella Street to allow for a new garage to be built. It is our understanding that the petitioner wishes to build a garage on the north side of his property, where the existing garage lies today. And also, he is expanding this garage, which he needs additional square footage for setback requirements. In front of you is a survey that was done by the petitioner, which shows a six-foot by 132-foot strip on the east side of South Rosella Street. Some years ago, the westerly 14 feet of South Rosella Street was also vacated, which is shown on this map, on the west side. With the requested vacation of six feet on the east, it still allows us to remain a 60-foot ride standard right-of-way for the remainder of this street. So, at this time, staff would recommend approval and open it up to any questions.
Any questions for staff on this?
I believe the petitioner is watching. We also have his phone number available, so if we have any questions for the petitioner, we can reach out to him as well.
Jeff, this is Ryan. Was this the one that the petitioner didn't want the entire area vacated, he only wanted part of it vacated?
No, that was Chris's previous item on the vacation.
Okay.
That was in regards to Chris's statement that staff extended the request for that vacation to pick up the other property to the west.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
The only question I had on this one, and, and I'm sorry, I just didn't drive by. I want to drive by this one. What's the, what's the sidewalk situation along this road? Just, just to the north of it, you've got a sidewalk running along there. I wasn't sure what the situation was here. Are we gonna be vacating close to a sidewalk, an existing sidewalk, impeding a potential sidewalk at a future point in time? Maps here. Does his existing, I'm looking on just, I'm looking on maps here, does his, is, does his existing retaining wall, is that on?
The petitioner has, has stated in his application that the retaining wall, with the subject vacation, the retaining wall would be located on the vacated portion that he would acquire.
Okay, so.
Based, based on this map, I do not see any north-south sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything on here in Google Maps. So, the retain wall now is technically, is, the retain wall, which he probably maintains, is, is, is right now not on his property.
Correct. You can kind of see it in the aerial here.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
Come up to the north, we do pick up a sidewalk here.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. And if, and if, at some point in time, there was a sidewalk put there, there'd be enough room?
Yeah, we still have the standard 60-foot of right-of-way, and it would be outside of the retaining wall. Right now, the retaining wall's out in the right-of-way, so the sidewalk would have to be out in the 60-foot right-of-way.
Okay, fair enough. Any other questions for staff? Are there any commission members that want to speak to the petitioner on this item, or have questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, then we'll just go to the public. We'll go ahead and skip past the petitioner comments, we'll go straight to the public. If you're a member of the public, and you have questions or comments on this item, feel free to call the number 712-224-4996. We'll give, we'll give a little time for anybody who wants to call in to do so. Okay, looks as though we've, we've waited long enough and no one has called in, so we're gonna go ahead and move to the executive session portion. Do we have, for the commission members, do we have a motion or comments on this item?
This is Ryan. I move to approve.
This is Bob. I'll second.
Boston Ellis?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gleiser?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
That passes on a six-zero vote. Next, we'll go to, we've got, under other business, we've got a requested conditional sign permit for the property located at 2417 Pierce Street.
Thank you. A stated requested conditional sign permit, 2417 Pierce Street, the existing Octapharma property located here in green on the map. Pierce Street would be on the east, 24th Street to the south. They are looking to replace their existing Octapharma sign with the new sign that is being proposed here. Essentially, it would be a 52-square-foot sign. Get into the numbers a little bit. Facing Pierce Street, the proposed sign, again, 52-square-feet. They have two existing signs on the site. Did talk to the sign company representative today, was a little bit different than what was on the staff report in the application, so he went out and actually verified some of these measurements today. So, the existing signage is 64 and a half square feet. The existing Octapharma sign is 42-square-feet, and that's to be removed. That's on the south portion of the building. There is a hanger sign on the site of 22.5-square-feet, and that would remain as part of this request. So, essentially, we're taking the 42-square-foot sign, removing that, replacing it with a 52-square-foot sign, so essentially, an additional 10-square-feet of signage on the site. Looking at the equivalent zoning district, the mixed-use zone, per sign, you can have two-square-feet per linear foot of building frontage. In this case, the building is just a little bit over, actually, 300-square-feet, so you could have about 600-square-feet of signage total on the site. But you do max at 15% of the cumulative facade area of the structure, which would be 618-square-feet on this site. So, they are well below what the code would normally allow for a mixed-use. Again, the property is zone NC5, so the Planning and Zoning Commission is required to approve the sign by the conditional sign permit process. So, at this point, city staff would recommend approval of the requested signage.
Any questions for city staff? Seeing none, then we'll, is the petitioner or agent online?
We do have their sign company prep, is available if there's any questions.
Do you, any commission members have any questions that we need to call the petitioner's agent for? Doesn't sound like it. So, now we'll, so, since we're gonna, since we're not gonna be contacting the petitioner for questions, and we go into the public comments, if you have questions or comments on this item, feel free to go ahead and call the number 712-224-4996, and we'll give you Okay, looks like we've waited long enough and no one has called in to state any comments on this, so we'll move to executive session. Does any of the commission members have a motion or discussion on this item?
This is Ryan. I'll move the item.
Second.
Stewart? Ross?
Yes.
Gleiser?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Boston Ellis?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes. That passes on a six-zero vote, and I think that, unless there's objection, that just goes, they, it's granted, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, next one is report from the chair regarding planning, zoning, and zoning of the city council. Of course, I'm not in attendance of those. The staff, do you guys have any updates on P&amp;Z items before the council? Because we didn't have a meeting last week, or not, two weeks ago, we didn't.
Last meeting would have been April 14th.
That was that call-in meeting.
Sign design, site plan, both done here. Wilson plat and rezoning, rezoning was deferred. The plat was approved. And then the facade materials at South Gate, that was done here.
All items were approved.
So, the, the petitioner on the South Gate, even though we didn't go with what he requested, he decided, he elected not to take it up to council?
Correct.
Okay, that's good, good to know. Okay. Any other, any other questions or items being brought forward by the commission or staff? I think Ryan's earned.
I had a question. Is the council, are the council meetings being handled the same way, or are they having people come in, in the, from the public?
Ryan, this is Jeff Hanson. The current method that we're holding these meetings is the exact same as the council meeting.
Okay. I just want to tell you guys, first, Jason, I think you're doing a real good job handling this, so appreciate that. And then this, the format, I don't know what you guys did from this meeting to the last, but I can hear everything now, and I feel like we're able to do these matters justice telephonically versus the last meeting, where I thought it was a pretty close call as to whether or not we are really getting the job done. So, I appreciate the changes that you've made to make this easier for us to hear on the phone.
This is Susan.
Maybe it's just that I'm, but I'd encourage staff to talk as close to the microphone as possible. I can kinda hear you guys, but it still leaves, I still like it when Jason talks, because he's a lot clearer.
I'm louder. Always have been. I definitely think Ryan earns the motion of the day award, since he's like moved every item. You're doing, you're doing good work remotely here, Ryan, making your motions. Seeing no other items, we'll go ahead and do approval of minutes for April 14th. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll move that. Minutes.
Way to go, Michelle.
Yeah, I have to go fast, right? Gets right in there.
We have a second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, now we need a motion to adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
I'll move the adjournment.
I'll second. Second.
Was that Ross?
Ross is one of them, I think it was.
I think it was Andrew first.
It was Andrew first.
Well, I'm not greedy.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. We're fine, okay. And then, it is now after 4:30, approximately 5:10 PM, and now we're gonna go ahead and begin the board of adjustment meeting. We only have one item on this agenda. I'll go ahead and read the opening statement. The Board of Adjustment is a volunteer, oh, sorry, we need to call roll first. Let's do roll first, sorry about that.
That's all right. Gary?
Yes, here.
Ross?
Here.
O'Neal? Stewart?
Here.
Boston Ellis?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Gleiser?
Here.
Okay, with that, we have six members present, and we'll begin the board of adjustment meeting. The Board of Adjustment is a voluntary quasi-judicial board appointed by the City of Sioux City to hear, review, and decide on applications for variances, conditional uses, and temporary uses as provided in the zoning and site ordinance of the City of Sioux City and enforced by the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. Unless the Board of Adjustment rules to the contrary, the application of appeal before the Board today shall be incorporated into the record of each appeal for evidentiary purposes. By doing so, the Board is accepting the statements containing the application as testimony offered by the applicant. We are an independent board of local citizens who volunteer our time and services and are not part of the city administration. I'd now like to introduce the members. Jason Gary, Chair. Ryan Ross, Vice Chair. Michelle Boston Ellis. Susan Stewart. Robert Anderson. Andrew Gleiser. Cindy O'Neal. And then we are served in our efforts by city staff. Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. Brett Nelson, Senior Planner. Chris Madsen, Senior Planner. Ron Cuny, Zoning Enforcement Officer. Steve Postolka, Assistant City Attorney. Larissa Carroll, Administrative Secretary, Community Development. The order of proceedings for each application will be as follows. Number one, the chair will read the item. This, number two, the staff will make a presentation, followed by the applicant's explanation of their request, followed by supporters' comments, and then supporters' comments, which will be, in this situation, will be merged into one via the phone call system. And then, we'll go into applicant rebuttal. Board questions by applicant and staff, and then finally, executive. by applicant and staff, and then finally, executive session, which is discussion by the Board with a motion of findings of facts, and then a vote on that motion. Until further notice, no in-person attendance will be permitted at the Board of Adjustment meetings. However, we have a telephone number available for you to call to provide comment and, comment on any agenda item. That number is seven-one-two-two-two-four-four-nine-nine-six. The Board welcomes all testimony in order to obtain all facts and evidence to base our findings and decisions upon. If you wish to speak, please call seven-one-two-two-two-four-four-nine-nine-six and give your name, address, and comments for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes so that everyone may have a chance to speak. Any action of the Board requires four affirmative votes for approval regardless of how many members are present. All decisions of the Board may be appealed to District Court within thirty days of the Board's decisions. If you choose to proceed with construction or action based upon the Board's decision prior to the end of the appeals period, you do so at your own risk. These items will be acknowledged by the City Council on June first, 2020, at four PM. Before we begin the meeting, have any Board members had any contact with the owner, petitioner, agent, or anyone listed on the notification list in regarding tonight's, with the items on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will go ahead and begin the meeting. The only item on the agenda for action tonight other than the minutes is Agenda Item two-zero-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-three-four, Requested Conditional Use Permit to Municipal Code Section twenty-five-point-oh-two-point-one-hundred-point-two for the property located at forty-two thirty-three Fremar Drive. Staff report.
Good afternoon. Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. Before we start the staff presentation, I just want to check the two phones we have here. We have the petitioner online, Brad Cummings. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
And also, we have a neighbor who has requested to join in on the meeting, Mr. Gary Winell. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff presentation.
Thank you. I stated requested conditional use permit at forty-two thirty-three Fremar Drive, shown here in green on the map. Fremar Drive would be the cul-de-sac street here on the south of the property. I stated the conditional use permit would be to allow a three-unit townhouse on the site. To go into a little bit of the history on the site, the preliminary plat and rezoning for Country Club View was originally approved June of 2012. That did include all of the property up here essentially being single-family dwellings. The final plat for that then was approved in October of 2013. The adjacent property to the east was rezoned and a new final plat approved in June of 2016. And then the subject property, as well as some of the property on the south and immediately to the west, was rezoned with a new final plat, and that was approved by the Planning Commission on March twenty-fourth of 2020 and the City Council on April sixth of 2020.
But I hear on the phone what I hear on there.
So the requested rezonings at that time was from NC-three to, or NC-two to NC-three. That would allow for the single-family attached units. It does max at four. And again, the petitioner is proposing a three-unit in this case. The NC-two did allow for two-unit attached structures, but we did rezone the entirety of the proposal. This is the general area map from that request that shows where the individual units are. And again, this property in question here in red on the north is where the three-unit townhouse is being requested. So the rezoning from NC-two to NC-three, NC-two prohibited any kind of townhouse over two units. NC-three did allow it, but by conditional use permit. So that's why we're here today with this request. So the rezoning got to a zone that allowed it, but we still needed this one last extra step. And as you can see on the map, the property immediately adjacent was granted. Again, as we went through the final plat, the rezoning and a conditional use permit was approved in 2016 for that property for the three-unit townhouse. Just a view, looking at the site, Fremar Drive here in the bottom left on the site would be located generally in this location. And just as a reminder, again, it's not this particular site, but the development, there would be one additional lot to the west that would be the attached single-family, twin home is the code would define it, but two-unit. So at this time, city staff would recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit. Open up any questions.
Any questions from the Board to the staff on this one? If not, I do have one question. When we, when the, when the Planning and Zoning Commission went through this back in 2016 and then recently, was there ever a discussion about adjusting the code so that a conditional use permit wouldn't be required with the rezoning? It would seem to me that generally speaking, you rezone it residential if it's allowed, that would be automatically permitted. In this case, it's allowed but not permitted by right. And has the staff considered bringing forward something to modify that so that it's all in one?
We did modify to a point. NC-two actually did prohibit any kind of attached units originally, and we did change that with the text amendment to allow the twin homes, so the two units attached. The NC-three zone, we haven't reviewed that one as far as changing it for the conditional use permit requirement. I think in this particular site, we chose NC-three. At this point, we're just being consistent with what the zoning was to the east. NC-four would have allowed this particular use. I think the concern with that was with what was originally platted, what was originally allowed, we still wanted that extra step to be required. So if they were to come in and say, change any of these additional lots from the two units that's shown to a three-plex, we would have to come back through this process. So we wanted that extra level of review on this site. Yeah, we could have rezoned to NC-four, which would have allowed up to a four-plex by right. In this case, we decided not to do that.
I was just thinking that as the Planning Department was going through their, their processes to why NC-three, you know, would have this particular, I get that this site maybe has some particular parameters, but this code applies to the entire city, not just this site. And so anybody, you know, applying for a denser zoning, coming in for a conditional use permit is not usually the standard for residential housing. So I don't know if that was something that might be reviewed in the future.
I think just like this site, we would probably look at what zone allows it and what zone fits in that neighborhood. Pretty much everything surrounding the site is NC-two. We didn't feel like going to the NC-four was a good fit.
Yeah, I get it. Any other questions for staff on this item from the commission? Seeing none, we have the petitioner on the line. Petitioner's free to make, make a statement at this time on, on this requested conditional use permit?
No, I really don't have anything to add to it. I mean, it's, it's next to an existing triplex, and it's just a, an addition to it. So I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Hey, Brad, can you state your full name and address for the record, please, for your comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Brad Cummings, Orchard, Nebraska, six-eight-seven-six-four. Street address is five-one-two-two-nine-eight-seventy-two Road. Sorry.
Okay. Since the petitioner is done, we do have someone on the line who wants to speak to this item. Can you state your name and address for the record and let us, and share your thoughts with us, please?
Mr. Winell?
Yes.
Would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, it's very hard for me to hear on the telephone. I turn the TV on once in a while, and I can hear there clearly, but it's very hard for me to hear on the phone. But my turn to talk, is that correct?
That is correct. The state-
Okay. All right, I'll get, get going here. My name is Gary Winell. I live at forty-two-twenty-five Fremar Drive here in Sioux City. I thank you for making the opportunity to present these remarks. The, my objection falls into three different categories. This proposed triplex sits on lots seven and eight next to my house, and my objections involve water, density, and valuation effect. First, water. The substantial hill on lots seven and eight encompasses at least half or more of those two lots when you measure from front to back. The considerable amount of water coming down this hill, and presently, this water is founded to the front of my property and to the parking and the street as being undermined. Every rains in the summer is one thing, but in the winter, when the ground is frozen, it's quite another matter. Presently, there is a retaining wall between my property and that of lot seven, and then just east of that is about a twenty-foot swale that water flows that's been graded into that lot and into lot eight, I believe. However, now there's a flag in the middle of that swale, which looks like perhaps the corner of a, of a, of the building. On the east end of lot eight, substantial water flows from behind the present triplex that's already built. And this past spring, it would have sunk in past your ankles because water ponds there. Putting five units of housing in front of all this water on its way to the street is like building a dam in front of it. And since water goes down the hill, it's headed for my property, my house, and my basement. Now, Mr. Salem called me about this matter and said landscaping would take care of this problem. I don't know what that means. Mr. Cummings called me and said he would send me the engineer's drawings on this water problem, but I haven't seen them. Secondly, density. There are presently twelve units on this cul-de-sac and fifteen more proposed in this project. That's twenty-seven on less than half of the total street. The original street was platted for thirty-two units. Twenty-seven units all have double-car garages. That's fifty-four cars. I hope if we ever have a grass fire, why, it's a slow one, because not everybody's going to make it out. There's only one way. Lastly, valuation. The proposed triplex is scheduled to have no basement and will be less expensive than the rest of the units. From the sign down on Outer Belt Drive stating the prices of these units and what the assessor has said in the past that about my house, there is already a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar difference in the valuation of my house and these proposed units. Clearly, my house will lose value, and it's just a matter of how much. Mr. Cummings told me on the phone he wanted to do the right thing. Well, the right thing to do in this matter is not build a cheap structure with no basement, but to change this triplex to a duplex and then perhaps make this structure a little more upscale along with the one next door to me. And, and perhaps even have some roof lines similar to my house to make transition. Instead of costing less, these units should cost a little more. That would be the right thing to do. That's what's done eastward on Forty-first Street, east of Bob Scott's house. If you drive down that street, you can't tell hardly the change between the duplexes and the houses because their roof lines and presentations are substantially similar. I don't know why that couldn't be done here and worked right into this duplex that should be changed to a, or excuse me, this triplex that should be changed to a duplex. Thank you for the opportunity of making these remarks.
Thank you. And now, and we got his address record. He's, okay. And then, so now we're going to open it up for any additional public input. Since now we've had a member of the public speak and the petitioner speak, if anybody else wants to call in and either ask questions or make comments on this agenda item, go ahead and call seven-one-two-two-two-four four-nine-nine-six. We'll give a little time and allow people to, to call in if they wish to, to chime in on this, on this item.
Mr. Winell, were you able to hear those comments from Mr. Gary?
I just turned the sound back on my TV. I'm not going to have to talk again, am I? Do I get off the phone and just watch?
Yeah, that, you're more than welcome to do that. Our chairman just asked for any additional comments for anyone that would like to call in. So at this time, we're just waiting for any additional phone calls. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, it appears as though we haven't had anybody call in to add additional questions or comments. So we'll turn it back to Mr. Cummings for rebuttal if you want to state anything. Is there any comments you want to make in regards to the neighbor who, who made some comments about the development and the conditional use permit?
Um, yeah, I did speak to Mr. Winell, and he wanted to buy lots, the lots adjacent to him, and then he didn't. And, yeah, so the drainage, the problem that he spoke of, it will be handled through the site plan, and we'll have to adhere to what, what's necessary to handle that, that issue. So I really don't know. I can't add any more to it. I don't know what to say other than that.
Brad, what, how are you going to handle the, the drainage flowing down that hill? How does your guys' site plan address that water flow?
The, the current swells that, that he talked about are the swell that's next to him. What, what I have seen is there's, there's going to actually be two of those now, which will divert the water up, up Fremar from him or to the east from Mr. Winell. Between the triplex and the duplex, there'll be a swell, as he says, that handles the water and takes it to the south or to the street. And the same to, that, then on the, on the west side of the duplex that's, you know, directly next to Mr. Winell. So they'll, we're basically, right now, that water all goes west. It goes to that single swell down by Mr. Winell's house or just east of his home and goes to the street. There will be three of them. One east of the triplex, and then between the triplex and the duplex, and then one west as well.
Okay.
So that's, that's how that water will, will play out.
Because right now, he's getting the water from ev, from both those empty lots completely, correct?
That's correct, yeah. It all, it, it appears to me it comes off of that hill. And it is, it is a really steep hill. It comes off of that hill, and all eventually ends up going west into that visible swell on this, this map that then takes it to the street.
Okay.
And I have to think right now, some of it actually probably ends up in his backyard. And, and I think by breaking it up, that it'll be less of a problem with that water. There won't be as much water flowing west. A lot more of it will be diverted south, further east than what it is now.
Any other questions from the commission to the petitioner? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Cummings, for your time. We'll now go into executive session. Do we have discussion or a motion on the findings of fact and the conditional use permit? Just for discussion purposes, since it's kind of quiet, I think that actually the development of those two sites will actually help him. Because he's got no buffer between those hills and his house, and it's just all going straight. I, I know that house. I've been in the home that the, the member of the public called in. I've been in that home before, and there's, there's, it's all kind of, that water's kind of aimed at him. I think actually, the development of these probably will be more beneficial than it will be harmful. And if he had more drainage going to the south, I think that's going to solve a lot, help solve a lot of his problems. Maybe not all of them, but some, a lot of them.
This is Ryan. I, I'm, you know, you have this expectation when you buy property, you think it's going to develop one way, and then it changes on you. Given the lots right, is not right next door to Mr. Winell, I'm more inclined to allow it to be divided into a triplex versus a duplex. I may feel differently when the other matter, you know, the next lot over comes before us, but on this one, I don't have a problem with it coming into a triplex.
I would just reiterate, Ryan, based on your comment, the triplex is the only one that would require a conditional use permit. The twin homes would be allowed by right in that zoning district. So unless they change-
That's what I was saying, is I, duplex would be less intensive than a triplex. And so if we were putting this triplex in right next to his house, I maybe would feel differently.
differently about it. But it's not right next to his house. There's a gap there. So I don't have a concern with the proposal.
This is Susan Stewart. Is, Chris, could a CUP be requested for the lot immediately next to the Winells? Or could they get a triplex if they got a CUP?
Susan, I'm not, I'm not sure we understood. Could you repeat that again?
Well, immediately next to the Winells, that was rezoned. Ryan was just saying that, you know, he's fine with the separate lot separation as long as it's not a triplex just next to Winell's in that lot. Could they get a CUP and get a triplex, put a triplex in there? Is that what would be required to make that a triplex? Or is there no possibility of a triplex next door?
I would have to review to make sure they have enough square footage for that. That site may not be large enough either way. If the site is large enough, then there would have to be a new conditional use permit on that site.
Okay, so they'd have a barrier in addition to having to get a CUP. You'd have to have the size right.
Correct, yeah. And just right now, looking at, I'm not sure how large those two lots that were proposed are. It may not be large enough to fit a triplex anyway.
Any additional comments, questions from the Board, or do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to, I'll make the motion to approve the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
Stewart?
Uh, no.
No?
Correct, yes. I said no.
Okay. Boston Ellis?
Yes.
Geary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Gleiser?
Yes.
Okay, so it was a 4-2, right?
4-2.
Okay, so that item passes on a 4 to 2 vote. So the conditional use permit will be approved. Please mark that there is a 30-day timeframe for appeals, and any construction you do, before that, you do so at your own risk. With that, other item, anything else to be brought forward by the Board or staff regarding the, the Board of Adjustment? Seeing none, we've got minutes from February 25th, 2020, we got to approve. We have, who, is anybody abstaining?
Boston Ellis, abstain.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion on this one?
I'll second it.
Did anybody make the motion? Nobody's made a motion yet.
This is Bob. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And Gleiser, was that a second?
Sure.
Or was it Ross?
No, I think it was, I think it was Gleiser.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Abstaining?
Abstain.
That passes on a 501 vote. With that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Next all.